I'd like to welcome everybody here to the regular monthly meeting of the Abington School Committee on Tuesday, March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four, here in the Abington Middle High School Library. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move on to any business, does anybody like to speak to address the committee? Now's the time I just ask you to please come to the podium and state your name and address for the records, if you would. No, okay. Moving on next, we're gonna read and approve the minutes from our last meeting on February twenty-seventh. So after the committee gets a chance to review, I'd just be looking for a motion to approve or amend, and a second.
We'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. You? Up first for the meat of the agenda is the report of the, uh, excuse me, the report of the athletic director, I tried to say. So just some background on this, Mr. Serino's graciously been willing to come and address the committee about the improvements that are slated to be voted on at town meeting on Monday, April first. We will not be voting on this, this is not school department money. But it does involve the schools to a point, so I wanted to ask Mr. Serino who would come and just explain it to anybody who wanted to know more about it. So thank you very much.
Sure, thank you for having me. I'll do my best to summarize this, but it's obviously a large project that's been kind of in the works for years. So there are definitely pieces that I'm gonna leave out, just in the interest of the committee's time. But if there's something you're curious about, definitely follow up with a question. But to really understand this project, there's a lot that goes into it. In some senses, it's kind of the final piece of one puzzle and the beginning of another. So I say it's the final piece of the puzzle over the last decade, primarily because of the new building, but as well as other projects. Every sports team that plays on campus at Abington High School has received what I deem a fairly significant upgrade to their facilities that they play in. Again, obviously, a lot of it is a result of the new building, the gym, the fitness center, the turf fields, but also purchased new cheerleading mats that were not a part of the building, reworked our cross-country course that included a new path, resurfaced the track, most recently, the baseball field, softball field. The last facility that we use that really hasn't seen an upgrade is Memorial Field in our football team. So in some ways, this is the last piece of getting every one of our teams something. I recognize we have not updated Rockland Rink. We obviously don't control that. But the ones that are on school property, we have made improvements to. And when I say it's the, the first piece is addressing Memorial Field as a community. This is the first step. So Memorial Field is a little tired, in my opinion. It's kind of been in need of some, some improvements for quite some time. So about five or six years ago, there were a group of us that kind of sat down and we said, "All right, let's do this the right way." At the time, there were people who were, the tennis courts were still tennis courts, and it was, "Let's put in a street hockey rink, let's update the playground." We could put this there, we could put that there. And we didn't want to get to the point where we did something smaller that two, three, five, ten years down the road, we'd have to take out or would prevent us from doing something that made a little bit more sense. So with some private money, some residents put together, we were able to survey the Memorial Field complex. And then from there, through some grant money with the town manager's office, we worked with a landscape, landscape architecture company to address that area. And kind of, if money was no object, what would you do with the space? They designed recreational spaces for communities, and they gave us a whole bunch of ideas. And then we said, "All right, well, what makes sense to do first, and what's kind of most pressing?" And there are three pressing needs, in my opinion, especially as it relates to the school department at Memorial Field. The first and the most obvious is the lights. So if you have been attending games, they're getting dimmer. They're operating, it's estimated about forty percent of what they should be currently. And if you're ever there when we turn them on, there are some interesting noises. Sometimes they all come on, sometimes they don't. So they need to be addressed. They were due to be relamped prior to this past season, but we kind of pushed the limits to get through the season and kind of make a decision, long-term, does it make sense? The technology that was installed thirty years ago is obviously significantly better, more efficient, but also better in terms of light pollution and specific directing of the lights and everything that you can do with the lights. So relamping would just be essentially replacing what we have with the thirty-year-old technology. So the metal haloid lights are becoming increasingly difficult to find the parts to. And obviously, that makes it more challenging to replace and also is increasing the cost. So the last time we did this relamping process, it took us several months just to find the parts, let alone initiate the work. And I would imagine it will be even more challenging now, five, six years later. So in order to address the light, so the lights is one of the three main issues that needs to be addressed. The second is the area known as the dust bowl. So if you're standing at the press box, the back-left corner, that kind of abuts the water where youth football and high school, high school football teams currently practice. It is, it has deteriorated significantly, to the point where I fear very soon we will have to make a decision to not put kids on there to practice. Years ago, there was some grass, there used to be some weeds. Now it's, it's, it's hard dirt, and that's probably why it's known as the dust bowl. So that area needs to be dressed, and then the JV baseball field is in need of some repair. It hasn't really seen any significant updates and investment, whether it's drainage, just evening of the playing surface and so forth. And that's a multipurpose field that sees football played on it in the fall. So obviously, football and baseball require different services. So in addressing the lights, if we were to upgrade, if we were to update it correctly, and we worked with some professionals, they pointed out, and anybody who has played on the field will recognize this, usually you don't want a light pole with a light fixture essentially in the end zone of a football field or behind the goal of soccer or the goal of lacrosse. So there's a reason why we only play football under the lights on that field. Part of it is because the lights that are there, you cannot play lacrosse on it. Lacrosse and baseball require the brightest lights and the highest lights for baseball, because it's the smallest ball that moves the fastest. Football is much larger, moves a lot slower, it's not up in the air. So we would have to move that light pole to the correct place, which is about, so if we use football numbers, about the twenty-yard line, makes sense. And the issue with that is, if we were to put it there, and why it was not originally placed there, is it would be in the outfield of the varsity field and the JV baseball field. So the solution is, if you move it back a little bit, offset where the ideal spot would be, and you just increase the height and adjust the lighting that you put on it, it solves the problem for the varsity baseball field. It would be about four hundred feet from home plate, which is where our fence would traditionally be. But now it would be right in the middle of the JV baseball field. So if we then move the JV baseball field to the area where the dust bowl is, and you were to resurface that, you would then have a JV baseball field that would be there, and then an outfield that would be a multipurpose grass field. Yes, I envisioned football would probably practice there, because they have been in that area, but it would be a grass field that could be used for anything, just like any grass field. And it would instantly, in my opinion, become our best grass field that we have. Part of this project is, we included in the estimates sod. So you remember, the side field as you enter Glenwood Way was part of the building project. It took us about seven years before we were on that field, because of the seeding process. We had some wet springs and some dry falls, and it just didn't take. So this ideally would be online, I say right away, it's not like they lay the sod and we leave, but within a month or so, and we're optimistic that we can kind of time it correctly to minimize the impact. So I think the benefits of this project are obvious to the teams that play there. Obviously, having new lights, you know, is, provides us the ability to continue to offer things at night there, a safe playing surface for our teams that currently are in jeopardy of losing that in the short term. But I, I think it's important to think about the consequences of not doing this. So if we don't do this and we lose the lights at Memorial Field, or we lose the ability for our teams to practice at the dust bowl, or for us to have two baseball games simultaneously, the impact is significant. So the lights, obviously, I know people say, "Oh, well, you can't play Friday night football games." That's obvious. But our marching band also practices on Memorial Field. And in talking with Mr. Leonelli, they shifted to night practices within the past couple of years, and it's his opinion that it was a significant factor in terms of them rebounding their numbers. So the marching band is growing. So our marching band would then probably practice on the turf at night, and we currently have youth sports on the turf at night. So that would be an impact there. The football team would then probably potentially have to play on Saturday afternoons. Well, that's where youth football plays, so how does that happen? Or they would move up here on a Friday night, we'd have to invest in the infrastructure up here to do that, and there's youth soccer up here on Friday nights, so that would be impacted. So there's a lot of impacts to potentially not doing this. Now, you could also address these in other manners, but the goal from the onset of this project was to address it in the way that made sense, but was also, not just made sense in terms of the logistics and the utilization, but financially. So we did not want to put any of the town departments in a position where it would eat up a significant amount of their operating budget or to ask the residents for a tax increase. So that's why we presented to the CPA, the Community Preservation Act Committee. We worked with them. Before going to them, we ensured that we had the support of a variety of town departments, from the superintendent, John Stone at the DPW, the Legion, because of the uniqueness of Memorial Field and what it represents, the Veterans Agent, the Town Manager, the Park and Rec Commission, we presented them, they all signed off and supported this. So the Community Preservation Act, they supported this, and they supported it in two ways. First, they said they wanted to put three hundred thousand dollars of their budget now towards it, as well as bond the remaining cost of it. So obviously, that is the town's money, but it does not come out of the school department's budget, does not come out of the DPW's budget, and it does not require a new tax for the residents. The benefits to Memorial Field, I think this really unlocks the potential for that place to return to the recreational hub of the community. And that's where I said at the beginning, it was the end of like getting all of these teams an improvement. This is where I think it's the beginning of kind of unlocking the potential of Memorial Field. Memorial Field is, I think, one of the most unique properties in the South Shore in terms of what it can offer. But right now, its configuration and its condition sort of limits that. So by moving the JV baseball field and adding the lights, and on the lights, we would also put lights on the back of the poles on the visitor's side, so that practice field would be partially lit. It would not be lit enough for gameplay, but it would be lit for youth sports to practice. So in October, as the sun sets, we're kind of crunched for field space. As you, for youth sports outside, you pretty much need lights at that point. So we're limited just to the turf now. Fortunately, the youth football program and the high school football program, they say, "We'll go up Memorial Field and we'll deal with, we'll practice in the glow of the lights, rather than having actual lights." So this would provide that. But it would also remove the backstop and the dugout fencing that the JV baseball field currently has and put it kind of on the edge of the property, so it would have more open space. So that's where the potential for additional improvements to Memorial Field comes in. The Landscape Architecture Company that we worked with, they gave us a long list of potential things that you could do with that space. But in their opinion, you really couldn't do any of them without doing this. So if you want to continue to have lights, this is the way to do that. And if you want to continue to have those fields, you need to adjust the alignment of them and do that first, because then it opens up the space that you could do whatever you want. I know that you have a picture in your, your packet, and there's been one that's been out there. That is a drawing that included other things that have been greened out, because it was just different ideas. So it's mainly designed to show the orientation of where the field would be and where the light poles would be. One thing that doesn't show up, and I know some people have asked, is there is a softball field currently along Ralph Hamlin Way, right next to the new parking lot that used to be tennis courts. That's untouched in this project. So in the picture, there's kind of a box that says, "Existing concrete light tower to remain," that kind of covers that up. That field would remain untouched in this, so softball would still have that field. That, I think, is the best way I can summarize all of that. But I know I left things out, but I know you have a lot of things to get to tonight. So I'd rather use the remaining time for any specific questions that people may have.
I just have a couple, if that's okay. So first of all, thank you. I know that this isn't school money that you're playing with here, but we, at least I have anyway. I've had a lot of people contact me saying, "Did the school committee approve this? What do you guys think about this?" So I think it's useful. So there, and this is, these questions I'm asking are questions that have come from other people and in anticipation of what people might say at the town meeting. So there is a perception that, you know, boys' teams are getting the lion's share of the money. So I know that there have been questions about, you know, is there going to ever be an investment here where, you know, only, you know, girls' teams only play here, except for softball, like lacrosse, you know, soccer, tennis, things like, "Will we ever get a snack shack? Will we ever get real bleachers on these fields to make it more of a real home field like Memorial Field is for football?"
So in terms of, I just think, I just want to be clear about investments here. So the town did invest in two turf fields and six new tennis courts and resurfacing the track. So is it specific to bleachers and a snack shack, is that?
Just in gen, yeah, I mean, those questions that come up, and just in general about, you know, and then it kind of ties into the next question. And again, this isn't me asking, but this is a question that comes up all the time, especially on Facebook. Why don't the boys play here on this beautiful turf field that we have here with the ball goal and all that?
Absolutely, I can answer all of those. So in terms of, I'll try and go in order, the bleachers up here, we do have a number of bleachers that can be moved around this facility, as well as come from Memorial Field up here. The current bleachers that we have here make sense to maximize the seating capacity without limiting the potential configurations of the field. So all of the bleachers that are out there, with the exception of the two, there's one by the middle entryway between the fields, and then one between the fields at the far end, along the woods. With the exception of those two, two people could go out there and move every other set of bleachers. So that's why that, why we did it that way, so that if you wanted to play across, I know youth soccer originally, so we wanted to place larger bleachers between the two fields, but youth soccer at the time pointed out, they play what's across the traditional alignment of the field on weekends. And if you put the large bleachers there, the kids could run into them. So they, they weren't comfortable, and it also limited the area for the kids to be out of bounds, to take the corner kick. So we made the decision to move them to the edge. So we certainly have bleachers that can be put there, but it's not without some effort, some of the larger bleachers. The second question was the snack shack. When this building was built, they did include for a lot of the infrastructure for the snack shack, but I did not make the decision not to actually build the snack shack. But all of the infrastructure is there. I believe there are people who have plans, and there were always talks of volunteers kind of building those buildings, which I believe the three existing concession stands we have, the at softball, at Memorial Field, and Riley Field, I believe were all constructed through some type of volunteer effort. I believe the Rotary Club way back when did the Memorial Field one. The softball, youth softball did the softball concession stand, and Riley Field was part of the Millennial Project. So that whole complex, I believe, was residents kind of coming together to privately raise that money. So in terms of investments in concession stand up here, I think the infrastructure's there in terms of how it gets done. I'm not positive, I, I've talked with some people, but there hasn't been a group that's really spearheaded that. And then I think the last of the three points you asked was, "Why doesn't the football team ever play up here?" So in building the school, we made a decision to keep the primary use of the football field down there. What that allowed us to do was add a second turf field for essentially close to the same cost. So if you were to add a stadium-type seating, you would have lost the ability to have that second field. And it also probably would have cost the same, if not more, because it would have, with the ADA accessibility laws, if you have seats, you probably would have had to put an elevator into the press box. And it also would have triggered plumbing codes with additional bathrooms that would have had to be within a certain proximity of the field. So for those five or six nights a year, it may have been nicer to be up here. Depends who you ask, there are a lot of people who say Memorial Field can't be touched. But when weighing all of those options, the school building committee, and I believe the community at large, kind of made the decision, we would rather keep football there. But that was a consensus, large group decision.
Can I, there were about twenty-five of us on the building committee, and it was our impression, because we were told by the community that if we moved the football team somewhere, other than Memorial Field, people would not vote for the project.
And just, there are clear benefits to us playing our football games there on, on Friday nights. So there are a lot of other communities that because of, football is a larger community event with a lot more logistics involved and setup, that there are other teams really can't play on Fridays. So soccer can't play on Fridays, or field hockey, we don't have that at the high school level, or they have to play earlier to clear the field. I don't like the, the perception of that. So we're able to play our regularly scheduled four o'clock games, and I know our youth soccer program in town has kind of embraced the Friday night lights for soccer. So the fact that we're able to do both of those, I think, is a, is a benefit to the community. And also, it's, it's very rare that teams kind of have their own facilities. So football kind of has their own facility, soccer has their own facility. We have an ultimate frisbee team. Ultimate frisbee teams are desperate to get a field to play on. They're thrilled if they get lines. Our ultimate frisbee team has their own dedicated field that they can practice when they want with the appropriate lines. So there are clear benefits to keeping and having these additional facilities. And it also allows us, for the most part, to turn our facilities over to the youth. Usually, by six o'clock, there are obviously some exceptions when we play opponents who travel far. But that's not the case in a lot of communities where the high school teams all practice on the turf field, and they're on there until eight or nine at night, and then where does the youth go? So there are definitely benefits to our setup.
Any else have any questions?
I don't. I talked to Peter yesterday on the phone too, just to get an idea before he came, so a lot of what he said, he said to me yesterday as well.
Peter, thank you, thank you for coming out. I'm just gonna add, and you kind, so this is, this is for everything, right? I would just ask anybody with any questions, feel free to reach out to Mr. Peter Serino about this directly. You're not gonna get your answer on Facebook that's accurate. Like anything else, you can go back weeks, the answers are not gonna come through the air. If you have a question about something, reach out to whoever it is within the school department. They will almost certainly be able to answer it for you. In the amount of time it would take you to search for any comments, that'll be incorrect. So that goes for this, but it can go for other stuff. People could read into that however they would like. So Peter, thank you for your time, I know you're busy, I know you're back and forth from the Cape this week for work, so I appreciate it, and have a good night.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to pass over Meg Doherty right now. Oh, are you outside, Meg, to go now? Yeah, yeah, that's fine. That's okay. Never mind, strike that. Ms. Doherty's gonna come up for a present, a report of the math department.
Hello, nice to see everyone again. I'm just here to give you a little update on the progress for the math and computer science department. One of the focuses that we talked about in the fall was our MCAT students who had not passed MCAT yet. So all of our students who needed to do the retake in November were filtered through a boot camp of types, where during bridge block, each of the math teachers took a certain standard and ran the kids through them for a week, so that they could have a refresher on those standards, just to kind of get them back into it. They're currently in an Algebra II course usually, and Algebra II isn't necessarily what's tested on the MCATs. So it was a good opportunity for them to go back and to review topics such as statistics and probability and geometry that they wouldn't be currently doing in their current math class. With that, we had nine out of the sixteen pass on that round. So in the spring, they had another opportunity to take the MCATs, and that was in March. So all of the juniors who took the spring retake were pulled into bridge block again with me to help prepare for the MCATs. The seniors were pulled one-on-one, so that they could have two weeks of kind of an intense boot camp. And for these kids at this point, it's really not about the math, it's about the anxiety of taking the test. Every time they take it, there, it gets bigger, it gets bigger, it get bigger, and it gets harder. So a lot of what it is, is really just kind of working the kids through, "You know this, you know this. You just have to, to have that confidence that you can do it." The way that we put it is like, "We just have to beat the test, it's as simple as that. You know the math, let's just beat the test, because it's about the test at this point." So we've been working with them, and they won't have their results until, usually right before graduation. So that's a little stressful. The other area that we spent a lot of time on this year and last year were our pilots. And I say pilots, meaning plural. We have looked at Reveal, Illustrious Math, Envision, Intro to HMH, I'm sorry, HMH Into Math, Mid School Math and Fish Tank Math. All of these, we're trying to do to get something that fits with our vision that we created last year that goes mainly around our building thinking classrooms philosophy. So with the results of the pilot, one of the things that we have realized is that there is no one program that encompasses all. Our goal is to stay rigorous to the standards, but to provide opportunities to incorporate that building thinking classroom, so no matter what program that we choose. We may not be able to find a program that will fit grades five through eight. Most programs are six to eight, or K to eight. That five through eight kind of makes for a tough split. Currently, our five through eight are exploring mid-school math, and five and six are potentially renewing Envisions. They're going back and forth, because they are trying to decide what we're looking at, whether or not they want to be part of the K six, or whether or not we're gonna try to keep it five-eight. So they are now looking at the mid-school math as well. And on Wednesday, Thursday, sorry, in two days, we're gonna go to Norton, and they are using the mid-school math program. So we're gonna have a chance to go meet with them. Grades nine through eleven kind of said, "Nothing really matches what we want to do," and that no matter what we do, we're gonna purchase a program where we're gonna use just parts of it and not all of it. So what we decided to do is, we were at the right point with the right staff to say, "Hey, let's do this on our own. We can do this," and we started that, that process. We're doing it through the help of the Looney Consultants, so kind of guiding us on the right path there, so that's been very helpful. And we're working backwards, still using the highly-rated programs that are offered through Open Educational Resources, the ones that we've piloted. So for example, Illustrious Math is one of the programs that we've piloted, so we are using that as one of our resources, as our spine. And it's really kind of been eye-opening, starting with the MCATs questions, to take a deep dive into the standard. So we met today, and it was actually really fun, we, well, I thought it was fun. We went ahead and we talked about all the different topics. So what is, what do we consider Algebra I? What do we consider geometry? What do we consider Algebra II? And the reason I like this is because it's professional development that they didn't know was in there. So we started off by looking at a topic, and I said, "Okay, let's find it in frameworks. Let's find the standard that matches that." And so they have this lovely standard, and the standard is, "Extend properties to exponents to rational exponents." Wait, extend properties of exponents to rational exponents. So we're like, "Okay, well, what does that mean? How deep are they going with this?" So then what we did is, we looked at the digital library, that has all the MCATs questions, and we looked at all the questions that MCATs has had that have been mapped to that standard. And by doing that, we could see the depth that they were looking for. So for example, in my mind, I'm doing exactly what they say, we're extending it to rational exponents. What they really meant is- What they really meant is that we're going to go ahead and use our rational exponents, rewrite it as radicals and then make sure that we know all the properties that go with radicals, all the operations and how to simplify them. So it's kind of hidden in there what they want you to do with it. So that was eye-opening for people and we said, okay, this is great. This is exactly where we need to be and we're housing it all in a place so that they, all these questions will also show up on their assessments. So it was exciting. Um, in terms of the MCAS, sorry, in terms of the piloting, I'm putting this out here now in a public forum, when you pilot and anybody who's piloted understands this, it slows things down. Teachers are really, really concerned that they haven't had the opportunity to get through as much material as they had in the past. So that when I come back next year, they just want you to be aware of that, that they are doing their best and they're being true to these pilots, which means they're testing every single part of it, which does slow down the curriculum. Um, on the other side of that, I think we are making huge inroads by seeing these types of things that were like what our expectations need to be, what it is that works and doesn't work. The strengths of the department, this is the most dedicated and patient educators, particularly while piloting. We have been doing this for two and a half years now, I think, looking at the pilots, knowing that something has to change and just trying to find that right thing that works for us. Um, they are dedicated and committed to using the building thinking classrooms and incorporating those tasks into their teaching. We have a variety of experience, which is really fun. Today they showed me how to do a hyperlink into a document and I show them old stuff, how to do things without a calculator. Um, so, uh, the other part is our computer science department. They teach real life experiences. We have a new course called engineering. We have 41 students enrolled in this. The kids are loving it. They three, um, 3D printed a skull out of red filament that is magnetic and they use it now in anatomy and physi- physiology because they can take the seven parts to it, take them apart, look how the, the skull is put together and put them all back. Um, so they're really enjoying that. Uh, we do have 29 students enrolled in our AP programs between computer science A and, um, CSP. And our stu, the last thing on that, sorry, was our student support. So we still have our support in place that we had last year that was so helpful to us, particularly in the middle school. Uh, the math interventionist that, uh, serves students in grades five through eight that do both the pull-out and the push-in model at the same time. The Bruce program after school, bridge block at high school, MCAS tutoring, um, is both a class and individually. Uh, we have an ACE after school for help and NH, uh, NHS after school help, um, as well as teachers are available after school. And I think sometimes people forget that we're still here. So if somebody wants help, although bridge block is wonderful and it is great, it is still not a one-on-one, right? There could be 15 kids in there. So if you have a child who's struggling, please encourage them to come after school so they can get that one-on-one help. Our areas for growth, our, uh, curriculum writing, that's where we are right now. So for the high school piece is getting that curriculum down on paper, um, incorporating more building thinking classroom tasks. Um, the biggest part I think is going to be around grading and I know that there's been a lot of talk about grading for equity, uh, but really how does grading work in a building thinking classroom? How do you grade thinking so that you can still be authentic, but also leave room for growth mindset? So that's really kind of a deep question and a philosophical question that we'll be battling, um, in the near future. And last is our AP scores. We need to get our AP scores up. I think we're still kind of in a little bit of a rut. Uh, what I'd like to do now is show you just kind of, I know last year I did an act, interactive and I made everybody get up and do math. I'm not going to make you do that, but one of the things that we are committed to, uh, through our vision is the low floor, high ceiling. So just two class openers that we would normally do. So what we have here is the what doesn't belong. So I'm just going to have you look at the problem. There's four boxes and just what number doesn't belong and why?
Sixteen.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Sixteen.
Why does sixteen not belong?
It's even.
It's even. It's the only one up there that's even. All right. Is he right?
That statement's true.
That statement's true. It's not wrong. Are there any others?
Nine.
Why nine?
One plus six is seven, two plus five is seven, four plus three is seven.
Fantastic. Is there any other reasons why nine might not belong?
Single digit.
It's one digit. Nice job. What about any of the others?
Forty-three.
Why forty-three?
Because it's not a number squared.
It's not a perfect square. Anyone find something for 25?
No, but I bet you there is based on the Raven call.
The, the thing that doesn't belong is that I can't think of a reason why it doesn't belong. So it really gets kids interactive, uh, talking to each other and actually fighting with each other once they realize that like, no, my answer's right, no, my answer's right. And that there's more ways to enter this problem. So this would just kind of be something that you would do to get all kids invested. But if you are actually going ahead and doing an opener for a class and you want to talk about math talks, this is one of my favorites and probably one of the things that's changed my teaching, uh, which is the what do you notice, what do you wonder? So all we have up there is a graph. What do you notice, what do you wonder? On the board, we have two, two columns going, what do you notice, what do you wonder? Kids will start off with things like, the points are in blue. That's a great notice. And then we'll keep talking about it and more and more questions will come up that we will notice, more things that we'll notice. Oh, it's in degree Celsius. Okay, that's great. What's in degree Celsius? Temperature. We have temperature, we have money. And so now all of these things are brought up and then we get the what do you wonder? By the end of the class that we teach, they realize one of the questions always, I wonder how this connects to what we're doing today. Um, and so what this basically is, is a word problem without the words. So by the time we actually get to the topic, which in this case is scatter plots, we've introduced their vocabulary for what they see, that I can now change to mathematical vocabulary and it doesn't feel as scary to them. And so it's just kind of a nice way to make the math classroom a little bit more comfortable for everybody before we get started. So those are two things that we incorporate into this, our new vision. Um, our vision of, speaking of vision, vision of the graduate, uh, we, uh, commit to the, um, critical thinker strand, which, uh, cur, uh, the critical thinker curiously seeks new knowledge, gathers information from a range of perspectives, reasons through and weighs evidence before making a decision, demonstrates an open-minded thought process and constructs arguments and forms conclusions. So that's really where we're committing to the, um, uh, vision of the graduate. Now we have AP scores? Now we have AP scores. So, uh, AP has taken a hit in a couple of different areas and I believe that Ms. Corbett was up here and spoke to you about some of the, um, issues post-COVID and issues, uh, pre-COVID. So pre-COVID, every student had to take the AP exam. Uh, it was definitely group mentality. We're all in this together, let's get through this, we can do it. Um, now it is, uh, students can take it if they want to. So for example, last year when we had AP calculus, um, a good example is that we had five students take the exam. Of those, two students took it and prepared for it. Two students decided to, to take a shot. They weren't really quite prepared for it, but they said, hey, listen, I've been in the classroom, let me give it a shot. And the last person decided that, uh, they would take it because it was cheaper to take it than to switch the test for the $40. Because every time you make a decision, it's $40. So she said, well, I might as well just take it, then I'll just sit here for two and a half hours. And she was very honest about it. She had missed the date to change her test. So she's like, I guess I'm just going to take it. Um, and those are things that we didn't deal with before. Uh, because of that and because of COVID, and I'm hoping that I don't have to say that much longer, these particular students, for example, that I have this year, these current students are coming in, had COVID in their al, accelerated algebra one. So the gaps that they were missing were things as being, um, rational expressions and equations, factoring when a is greater than one, and particularly the unit circle. So everything gap that I have to go back and fill in with them is time that I'm taking out of the current AP curriculum. So as we get through this, I do believe these scores are going to get better. I also think that we need to let kids know, and this is me personally, that right from the beginning, that they signed up for an AP class, test or no test, we are moving forward. And I think we've been a little bit nervous to do that since COVID. I'm back on the COVID train. Uh, not the COVID train, I'm back on the non-COVID train. Sorry. Uh, AP stats was interesting because we didn't run it for two years, um, because of COVID. So let's see what we have to there. Uh, we have a new teacher who is currently, uh, last summer received AP training through the summer institute. This current year, we have two classes, approximately half are planning on taking it. Um, so that's a good number. Um, the teacher unfortunately just went out, well, unfortunately, it's a blessing, went out on maternity leave. Um, so the students are stuck with me, so they may change their mind. We'll see how that goes. Computer science A, we had one student take it last year and they lost his test. So there's no data. Mm-hmm. That wasn't on us, that was on them. Sorry about that. And then we have computer science principles. I was looking for the data and that's what I found out. Um, so computer science principles, we have a new teacher. He signed up for the computer, the AP summer institute, which is really kind of where you learn everything, what is involved in the AP course. Signed up for it last year and they canceled the course. So he's currently looking to, um, re-enroll in it this summer, hoping that it will run.
Yes.
I'll save it for when I have my other questions. Sorry. Nope, keep going.
I'm good. I think that's, we're there.
Sure, I'll jump in. Um, do we offer to fund teachers to go to St. Johnsbury?
Yes, when funding is available. That's where, um, the AP stats teacher went there last year. And, um, the computer science teacher chose to go to Bridgewater to do it through the, used to be called the MIMZ program.
And I know it's so much closer, but it is, it's fabulous.
Can I just ask you to elaborate?
Yes, um, St. Jo, St. Johnsbury is one of several different AP teacher schools where you go to.
Summer institutes.
Yes.
Where you really earn your AP.
It's summer camp.
When you understand the difference.
It's beautiful. It's a fabulous experience. It sounds so dorky, but oh my gosh, if I could go back every summer, if I didn't have kids enough to take care of them, I would be going to St. Johnsbury.
That is the, when people come back, that is the response.
It's in Vermont.
I learned so much.
Um, the AP scores, um, I want to make sure that I'm clear that I'm not making excuses for anyone, for teachers or students, but I just wanted to share again my observations from my own experience in the classroom over the past couple of years. Kids in general are resisting working hard and buckling down. Um, they're a little bit apathetic and disinterested and they always want to be entertained and you have, it, it's going to be a challenge to get those numbers up. I know that we can do it, but I just wanted to say that for everybody out there who's not a teacher, it is, it's a different experience. The kids are different. The way they behave is different. Their interests are different. Their brains, definitely the way that they approach learning is different and it's really hard. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate that we are ready to tackle that and to say that this could be better, but it is tough. I want to acknowledge that.
I really appreciate that.
For everybody in the classroom, uh, including my own kids who, one is in your class right now. And I know he doesn't always help. He, he does do his work, um, but I see in him what I see in some of my own students and it's just whatever's happened over the past four or five years, whether it's COVID, social media, society, it's, it's a new breed of student and it's tough. It is tough. Um, so I, I look forward to seeing the results over the next couple of years, but I, I'm not holding my breath. I know that it will take time and there's so many more factors than the curriculum that we pick out and I, I think a lot of it is to do with the kids and somehow figuring out how to get them more connected and invested in the classroom. Um, two questions, the robotics club I saw.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes. So our engineering class runs during school and then on Monday afternoons, there's a group that is the robotic club and they come and meet.
Do they compete?
They do not compete yet.
Is there a plan in the future to maybe get them in some competitions?
There's a hopeful plan in the future. There is.
Um, and then my last question is, um, you found that for the high school, no one program fits. Um, and it is, it is amazing and daunting to have that flexibility to go out there and, and grab your own things. Um, when, when you said that you're doing it on your own, are you talking a full curriculum overhaul or just supplementing? Are you going to stick with some of the things that you have with whatever curriculum we have and then supplement it with what you're finding on your own? Or are we throwing out the curriculum and overhauling everything?
It's, I would call it somewhere between a revision and an overhaul because algebra one is still algebra one.
Yep.
Um, what we found by doing the pilots is that people were really just using them either for textbook questions. And if it didn't give you the self-graded homework, then there really wasn't a point to the, the, the homework questions because we have other ways to do that. And we found that there were all of these pieces that became so overwhelming that we said, we can't throw all this at the kids. So what we decided to do is that we say, like, for example, one of our programs, they don't even give you PowerPoints. So we ended up creating PowerPoints and then we sit there and say, well, these are too wordy. They're just way too wordy. So what we decided to do is concentrate on the end game to make sure that by looking at the standards and looking at the questions being asked, we were being true to the rigor, which over the past few years I think has slipped for us. And so we have to bring that back. And by looking at the actual questions, all in one standard, instead of saying, oh, this is 2003, let's look at it. This is 2002, let's look at it. By looking at all the questions that have been released to that one standard gives us a better idea of what we need to teach. So we have tons of materials. The way it's planning on working is that we are creating our own PowerPoints to go with them and incorporating questions that we found along the way. So for example, we talked about illustrative math. They have some really rich questions that can be used in our building thinking classrooms. So we're pulling those in. We still have our IXL and our Delta Math to get the skill-driven part. So we want to do more like, there's a thing called mathematic, calc, medic, stat, uh, stats medic, which gives you a lot of scenarios that, um, it's very similar to building thinking classrooms. It is experience first, formalized later. So where you give this situation first and the students realize it's a reason to do the math and then you go, oh, here are the notes. Now we, we have all that together. Um, so it's still going to be pulling things in, but it has to be streamlined. We already agreed. This is not like, I've got 8,000 things, you know, I've been here for 30 some odd years. I have 8,000 packets I can pull. This is not what we're doing. Like we are finding what we consider to be strong questions that will get at the thinking and then the skill piece can be done through the IXL or the Delta Math. I don't know if that answered your question.
My question was huge. It's like.
It's an overhaul, but we're not starting from scratch.
Yep.
We have resources to go to.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. But like I said, and, and we've, we've had this conversation before, you have to have the right people at the right time.
Yep.
And it was truly that day that I just said, you think we might want to try it on our own? And the first response was, well, I don't hate it. And then the next response was, wait, like, we're already doing this stuff. No matter what program we pick, we're going to have to re-prep it. So why not pick something, I'm sorry, why not prep something that's going to work for[1680.13] I'm sorry, why not prep something that's going to work for us? And we, like I said, we have Heidi working with us, who has been great. So she's really been keeping us on, here's the rigor. Like, let's look at those questions. Let's make sure that we're getting that. And because she's with us in this process, pulling in those tasks for each unit for the building thinking classrooms, I'm going to assume is going to be easier because it will be mapped.
And Heidi is probably going to consult.
Yeah, sorry.
And all the teachers, all the teachers, regardless of whether they're teaching Algebra, Geometry, Calc, whatever, it's a department voice as you're creating that curriculum?
Yes, so the six of us, there's seven of us, but one's on maternity. So today, for example, there are six of us. And we break up so that we have two working on Algebra II, two working on Algebra I, and two working on Geometry. So that we kind of break up the work. But part of what we have to do is vet each other's stuff.
Yeah, so that there's buy-in.
Yeah. Yep. Because the first thing, that was the first thing she had us do, is to put what's in Algebra I, what's in Algebra II, and saying, well, where does this belong? Because you've got it here and you've got it here. It only needs to be in one place. And things like Geometry. In Geometry, one of the things we do is find equations of parallel and perpendicular lines. Well, we always did that in Algebra because it was finding the equation of lines. But really, it belongs in Geometry. And it makes more sense in Geometry because then they can refresh that before MCAS.
No, it's great. And if I have questions, I'll come to you. I don't want to take up too much time.
It's a lot, it absolutely is a lot. And if you had asked me yesterday, I probably would have been like, what? But after today's meeting, I'm like, let's go, we have this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have one question. So I'm not a teacher, I'm not an administrator, so feel free to tell me if this is a crazy question. But I know in the three years I've been on this committee, you know, we've seen some struggle, especially in the younger grades with scores, right? And CAS, APs, I think, a little bit of a different animal. And then you also mentioned tonight with all these different pilots that it slows down the teaching. Is there a thought of, is it possible to maybe take a pause on it? Because like, to me, like, math, math, right? So, and I'm probably wrong, but are we doing more harm than good at this point, knowing that we're already struggling in that area?
We absolutely have come across that and gave that a lot of thinking because there's that, we need to be true to the pilot so that we can make sure that we are getting the right program for our students. But you're absolutely right. So we decided on this last pilot to approach it a little bit differently, not do a pilot and just to explore. So we're looking at the materials during PD. And instead of having the kids go through them, then what we're doing is we're actually going to another school and seeing them do it and kind of using their information. And then, as we see that, if they want to come in and teach a lesson with it, or we'll bring the publisher back in. But we did decide that, that it was just enough was, it was a lot. Thanks.
So, yes, if I have it right, just because it's just sort of goes with what Julie was saying, we saw a dip in the middle grade math, middle grades math. And then we saw improvement in the last...
Last year.
The last set of data in that middle school math. And then, then in the high school, we still have that middle school group. We do the high school, so they require us, yes, we want to move quickly, but there's also some deficits there, I think, because they moved from middle school to high school.
I think the hardest part for math and for foreign language is that anything that's sequential, if you create a gap somewhere, it doesn't go away until you fill it. So it kind of, we have to do that in the best way possible, in the most meaningful way possible. But speaking of that, our current 10th graders are that class that you've been talking about for a long time, taking MCAS this year. We're running them through boot camp. All the math teachers are running them through. We're going to do the same thing that we did for the juniors for about 10% of the population for them. And that would be that 10% who we identified who should have been in meeting expectations, but who were a little bit below. And so we're going to work with them, kind of pull them over that hump. Hopefully that will work. If not, well, I'll be here next time anyway. Hopefully with really good news.
My turn?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. So actually, I had very much the same questions and thought train you had. So I have two things I want to ask first, thank you. The going at, you were talking about the right people at the right time, which is great. How are we formalizing it so that if the time comes when you have a new person or a different person or a person with different thing, is there a formalization process of what you're doing right now so that anyone who comes in will have the ability to pick up where you are at now?
So it's funny you say that, that is exactly what we worked on today. And so the goal is that a new teacher coming in should be able to pick up this document and see exactly what to do. So that's what our goal is. So even today, that's why we decided to link the questions into, and we're just doing our rough draft right now, basically. We're just getting information in the right place to find out what the depth is before we start creating our actual guides. And so with that, we're like, we need to put these links right here so that someone coming in knew, knows exactly what they're looking for. So our goal is to make it very user-friendly, I guess.
Thank you. The other thing is looking at the middle school. I know that there's been a lot of talk, five through eight. Do you do five, six? Do you do five through eight? Especially knowing that our sixth graders finish in math year, some of them are going to go on to advanced math, some of them are not. Can you talk a little bit about the thought behind potentially keeping it five or K through six on a math curriculum? I just, I'm wondering, can there be a pitfall if we're using one curriculum that stops partway through the middle school and then picking up maybe a different one?
So that's actually why we looked at a five, for a five through eight program, was the main reason was to reduce one transition. So, I mean, even now, we have a K to six program and we have a seven through 12 program.
Right.
And it's just an awkward split, right? But it's basically what the old building used to be. So that's why we really kind of wanted to get that five to eight piece together. So that we'd have one less transition. And so that they would all be talking the same language in the five through eight. We tried, we tried, and we tried. So we have one program that's still viable, I guess, we would say.
The one that you're going to see in Norton is kind of a last... Okay.
Yep. So that's, we're still trying. But we'll have to see what comes out of it. The, I don't want to overspeak, but K to four is on two more years with invisions? So the question is whether now's the time or in two more years.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answered.
No, it... I mean, I think it is clear. Like, when you're doing a transitional shift in the middle of kind of a four-year, it, language does change. Yes, it's math, but the language they use to approach it does change.
And that's why we've looked at so many different pilots. Because like, there has to be, someone has to have built this and done a good job with five through eight. But it's just, they've transitioned to be elementary and then leaving for high school. So the high school, you know, the seventh and eighth teachers look at it and go, no, this isn't going to work. And then the five and six people look at something that's a little different. They're like, that's not going to work. So it's really been our conundrum.
Okay. And the other thing is, I do know that a group of students went to Bridgewater recently for STEM and I heard very good feedback. So I like the fact that we're looking at math and science and exploring possibilities. Thank you for offering those opportunities to our kids for whom that might be a potential career path.
Well, and I do have to say, that is kudos to Phil Foley. He is just out there teaching them what it's like in the real world. I mean, his classes run is what he calls C-level. I'm like, what do you mean by that? You are a CEO, a CFO. Everybody has a place. And if you don't do your job, your team votes you off. They fire you. You have to go ahead and negotiate to another team to take you on. I mean, it's so realistic and the kids are absolutely in it. They negotiate everything. It's been a lot of fun and it's been contagious. We have 41 people in those classes. You know, it's just, and then like you said, they went and just had a great time at the Bridgewater STEM training. So, and things like engineering courses like that aren't things you see at other places. That is 100% Phil Foley. And he's loving it.
Well, we appreciate all of everyone's hard work, so thank you.
All right.
Okay, I have a few, I apologize. So kind of capitalizing on what a few people have talked about, but I just want to dig in a little deeper. The pilot, the comment, I think Julie mentioned, is the pilot slowdown. The MCAS scores for the current sixth graders who were taking the test last year were very low. I wonder if there's going to be an issue with a pilot slowdown, if that's impacted that group, where there's a gap in knowledge? And is there anything that we can and should be doing to take advantage of summer months? Where we're going to see a summer slide in math and everything? Is there something that we need to think about to close that over the summer months? Because I feel like once we hit September, again, you're jumping back into a curriculum and students may not be met where they need to be.
So I do know, and that we just gave the grade six common assessment. So we can use that to identify any gaps. All the students took it to identify any gaps that might need to be filled. When they would get filled would kind of be a bigger question. We can definitely look into that. But I think keys to identify them and letting the next grade know that in advance so that we can kind of fill those right at the beginning and whether it's over the summer or... The hard part with the summer is the inconsistency as to whether or not everybody does it or not. So that does make it a little bit more difficult.
And there's also equity issues with assigning required things for the summer? So it's much more equitable for us to address at the beginning of the year as a beginning of the year boot camp, if we need to, or certain cohort of students at the beginning of the year?
And I do believe, but I'm not sure. Next year, they'll have a program called iReady, which will be much more diagnostic in nature to be able to identify individual students' gaps.
Yeah.
By standard, it's K to six level.
And that will be all grades? Because is that, the assessment you were talking about, okay, is just incoming seventh graders? Or are there advanced placement assessments done for the incoming eighth graders and ninth graders as well? Or is it just that one year that takes the assessment?
Yep. I don't think we have a common assessment necessarily, but I can look into that. That's not necessarily a bad idea. I know we've talked about it in the past. And I'm sure as part of our new curriculum work, it would be a summative assessment at the end.
Okay. And then going to the K to 12, wow, I'm amazed that you guys are developing a curriculum on your own. That's incredible. I wonder, and Heidi touched on this a little bit, but like the vernacular. So for EL students, do we have consistent terminology? Because math, sure, five plus five is easy to understand regardless of your native language, but there's so much around word problems now in math that I feel like, by doing our own curriculum, do we have someone who's helping us ensure that EL students can succeed in this curriculum as well?
That's a great question. And I think it's something that we all have in the back of our mind, having such a strong population of MLs. I think that one of the things that I, they don't know this yet, but I would like to see built into these units are sentence frames for everybody. So that there's that idea that it's consistent across the board and people aren't going to look for them. Now, obviously, sentence frames are only one thing, but I would absolutely appreciate having another eye from perhaps maybe Elizabeth Dupree or one of the people, or even the whole department, look at it to see what we can do to make it better, to make sure that we're giving them enough information that we are being consistent.
And do you know if there are any other communities that are taking this on or have recently taken this on at the high school level for these three curriculums?
I will tell you what I know and you can identify if you've worked in a school before or not if this has happened. People will say that they are using a curriculum that they have purchased. And then they will...
Okay.
So if you go in and you ask them what they're using, they'll tell you.
And you have the resources to kind of feel out other neighboring schools to find out what's working and what's not?
Yes, I am the Vice President of the Southeastern Massachusetts Mathematics Chairpersons Association. So we are a close-knit group of people who use each other all the time because of these reasons. And that's how I know that answer because they are very truthful. And I say, hey, has anybody else done this? And they all say, well, we're doing it, but...
Don't tell my school committee. And then my last question. When we say AP Calculus, when I went to school, there was an AB and there was a BC Calc. Does that still exist and what do we offer?
Yep, we offer AB.
That's all I got, kindly.
Ms. Doherty, I have a couple.
Sure.
One of them was, I'm just going to go in order of the presentation. So you mentioned about the supports. And the first one you mentioned was the Math Interventionist for Students in Grades 5 through 8. I don't know if this is state secret or not, but that funding is not there going forward.
I was hoping to put it in that...
Is there a plan to, a similar, and I understand if there's not right now, but I just, knowing that that's not going to be there on a going-forward basis, is there a plan to supplement what they were doing or to help bridge that gap that they were doing with those students that needed it during that time?
I am not sure. I don't...
Yeah, I think the middle school administrative team is looking at options. How can you provide more support with less staff?
Yeah.
So that kind of remains to be seen how we actually provide that support.
Okay. The only one I have, and they're kind of related, is, it related to the, so the AP Calculus scores, at least from a trending perspective, I noticed we were going, we went up at a decent percentage from last year. But it brings me to the AP Computer Science Principles, which went down by a significant percentage from year over year. And it's about the same amount of students that took it. Is there a glaring reason as to why that might have happened?
We have, prior to 2000, I can't remember, the last two years, including this year. So prior to that, we had a teacher who was experienced, who was trained and was a code.org facilitator, who taught how to teach AP courses and then went and got trained as an AP reader. So his level of experience was different than what we currently have. And like I said, the AP Institute for that particular teacher was canceled.
Okay.
So I...
No, I mean, it had to be something, right? It just didn't make sense to see that. So I figured there was something, I was just wondering what that something was. So thank you, I appreciate it.
I think it's the training.
Okay.
No, I'll just vouch for the curriculum. That everybody has one, but nothing ever fits. There is no perfect fit. And everybody, every district argues over textbooks, curriculum, and nothing works. That everybody needs little pieces of everything. So, yes.
We're just admitting it.
Yep.
Ms. Doherty, thank you. I know, I know you had a busy night. I know you're teaching your course before this too. So thank you very much, I appreciate the time. Up next, Dr. Basta with the Student Opportunity Act Plan.
Good evening, everybody. Last month, I asked for a call and response. You should know that. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr.
So in your packet, you have the full Student Opportunity Act Plan. So I'll be referring to that. There's no slideshow, it's just one slide. So it's just me talking. According to our outgoing education commissioner, actually, he's gone. Our former education commissioner, Massachusetts leads the nation on many measures of student learning experiences, student achievement, and post-secondary success for its students. However, a closer look reveals inequitable gaps in experiences and outcomes across racial and ethnic groups, in economically disadvantaged communities compared to higher-income communities, for students with disabilities relative to their non-disabled peers, and for English learners compared to students whose first language is English. The Student Opportunity Act was enacted by the legislature to help districts begin to close those gaps. As you know, Abington has been receiving SOA, Student Opportunity Act, funds as part of our Chapter 70 allotment since 2020. Regardless of how much SOA funding a district receives, a three-year plan for closing said achievement gaps by combining SOA funds with other resources to target vulnerable populations is due this April 1st. As you can see in the full plan that's in your packet, we plan to provide staff with professional development and support aimed at meeting the needs of and engaging all students. As a district, we will focus more of our work with vulnerable populations by using the formative assessment data that Ms. Doherty was just referring to, iReady, to inform our instruction and interventions for students in K to six. And all multilingual students, K-12, will also have access to that same iReady assessment. Our multi-tiered system of supports, which is referred to as MTSS, will also be updated and aligned to meet the needs of today's student populations in all of our buildings. I'm happy to answer any questions about the full plan that you have in your packet. So go for it.
iReady assessments, is that a tool that's utilized by administration, by teachers, by families, or all of the above?
All of the above. So iReady is a computer adaptive online assessment tool. The main component is a three-times-a-year benchmark assessment in language arts and in math. And it will be administered K to six, all winter, spring, by classroom teachers. The data is accessible for the classroom teachers, for the administrators, support staff. Central office will have access also. And there are very detailed parent or family reports that we have to figure out if those will be uploaded into the Aspen Parent Portal, which I think is what we'll do, or if they'll go home by paper. But the data follows the student all the way through. So we can see how a student has progressed from year to year, from grade, from building to building. It'll give us much more information about students, but in the moment, it gives us much more information about instruction, groupings, and intervention for students because it measures where they are compared to the standards.
So it's content-driven as opposed to, based on the standards,[1764.79]
So it's content-driven as opposed to, based on the standards, as opposed to, I guess, logic and thought process? Like, does it probe it all into like executive functioning or anything like that, or is it purely, okay?
Yeah, yeah, it's based on the standards, yeah. There are other components of the assessment suite that are available to teachers to use that don't get at what you were talking about, but there, there are other assessments that teachers and intervention teams can use as progress monitoring tools in between those three major assessment times. So we're really excited, there's gonna be training for staff before they administer it in September, and then they'll administer, and then after the administration, the iReady team will come in and do PD with staff to look at the data. Here's, here's how you run reports, here's what information you can pull out of the reports, and how you can use it for your groupings and for instruction.
I wonder if this, um, for the students, especially the younger students, will take a little pressure off MCAS testing, if it has a similar look and feel to an online platform assessment that goes nowhere and doesn't mean anything? I wonder if it takes a little anxiety off MCAS, probably not for the high school kids who know at this point it's a graduation requirement, but.
Yeah, but they'll be more comfortable with taking an assessment on a device.
Yep. Thank you.
My turn? Um, so I, this is our three-year plan, uh, we have been receiving funds since 2020. Did we have to report back for the previous three years with anecdotal evidence? Or are they using that based on previous test data, things like that coming from the state?
Both. So, um, there was a plan submitted in 2020, and every year, there is a data collection period, um, around now, to show progress towards the goals that you dedicated your funds to from the initial plan.
All right, and then we've had positive feedback along the way, right?
Yep, yep.
Um, and then, so the iReady assessment where you said, uh, there'll be information for families, do we see opportunities for, say, like our LPAT group to, um, find ways to use this for families as well to kind of help make a more cohesive community experience where it's not just this is what your child needs to work on, but let's create some opportunities all the way around? Or have we not got that far yet?
Um, I believe our, um, English, um, I don't know why I'm blanking on the name, our ELE department, they were ESL, our ELE department, that was their intention, they selected, using this product, K-12, um, as a tool for their students before our assessment committee selected it for all students K-six. So I believe that's their intention already. How does this inform and measure our instruction and intervention with our ML students in their work? But how can we also communicate to families what they can do at home? And so we'll, we'll definitely work with our ELE department towards that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I just wanna say, I think as, as, as noted in the opening paragraphs of it, as the numbers continue to rise, right? That percentage of students that fit in those categories continues to rise, and something that we're, the focus is gonna have to absolutely continue to shift, I mean, it's even, it's seen in our budget where the EL, the EL's, um, support is needed more than almost anything else, so. Have any questions, though?
I can say that, just, nobody asked this, but based on what you just talked about, it is an area of need, absolutely. It's also an area of challenge because the funding has dropped considerably.
Yeah.
What we, what, every district has received a different, um, amount of funding for SOA, um, based on the population, and changes over time. But what we've, what we're receiving for next year is significantly lower than we received for the last three years.
Yeah.
The increase.
Yes, sorry, thank you, correct.
We've, we're receiving the same, the money we received the last three years, but we've been seeing million-dollar-plus increases, and we're not, sorry, not seeing the increase.
Got it, thank you. Um, nobody has any questions, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act Plan as presented by Dr. Basta.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Basta. Are you gonna, is James gonna come up with you right now, or?
Um, I'm gonna go first.
Okay.
Onto summer programming. Are you ready?
We're ready, we're ready.
You mean winter outside?
Winter outside, right.
So I'll be talking about our, um, General Education, uh, Summer Academy, which we have, um, held in the past. So, um, due to changes in, um, available funding, we will be offering our, uh, middle school and high school Summer Academy, um, as we have in the past. However, we are returning to it being fee-based. The purpose of Summer Academy for middle school and high school students is credit recovery and promotion. It is open, because it is, because we are returning to fee-based, it is also open to non-residents, students from other towns who are looking for credit in order to, um, uh, get promoted or in order to, um, uh, improve their GPA in their home district, but maybe their home district isn't offering the summer program that we are. They can, um, pay tuition, um, to participate in our Summer Academy. The classes that we offer focus on English Language Arts, math, history, and science. Um, at the middle school level, um, they're integrated so that it's humanities and STEM. And, um, I think that's it for that page, any questions about that page? The dates for this summer are July eighth to August second. The classes in the Summer Academy are 1.5 hours per course, four days per week for four weeks. The middle school integrated, um, classes are double-length, that's why there's a difference in, um, the price between the middle school students and the high school students. Any questions about this slide?
Do we often have, in the past, have we had students from out of town?
Some.
A few, cancel.
And is it also open to our students who just feel like, or their families feel like they need extra? Or is it only?
Good question.
It almost never happens.
Yeah.
Voluntary summer school, maybe. We wouldn't say no, I don't think.
Wouldn't say no, but.
Wouldn't say no.
But they probably wouldn't say yes.
Maybe not, I'm just thinking about some of the parents who are concerned their child might not qualify for ESY, but they're concerned personally about, um, backsliding, things like that.
But they don't need credit recovery.
They don't need credit recovery, but is this an educational opportunity they could avail themselves of? Or the lovely price of $350?
Yes, unless we run out of space for the students who need it for credit recovery.
Okay.
I don't think that would happen, but I have to put that caveat.
Good caveat.
That takes place here?
Yep, yep, our Summer Academy takes place here. Any other questions?
How many staff members will be included?
It depends on how many students enroll. I feel like it's about five or six teachers.
Yeah, it's not, um, aggregated, that one teacher per class.
Yeah. Did you hear that? Any other questions? Okay, transition.
Dr. Robbins?
EL, so I'll be speaking about our Extended School Year Program, and how this differs from what Chris was speaking about earlier, is this is our special education program that occurs, um, over the summer. One thing that you should know is that this is a program that is mandated by the state, by state and federal special education, uh, regulations. And the big idea of it is that, um, what we, what we're tasked with doing as a school district is identifying students who are vulnerable to regression as a result of their disability, so that on the, on average, eleven weeks of summertime, those students are more likely to lose the skills that, that, that they had learned over the previous year, so that when they arrive on day one of the forthcoming school year, they're at a greater disadvantage in comparison to their peers. So the idea is that we offer these programs so that students will retain the skills that they had learned over the school year. So when day one starts on the new school year, they'll be, uh, well-positioned, um, to perform. So, um, so our teachers who work in our Extended School Year Program have really two kind of ideas in mind, one of which is like, let's prevent regression. That is, what did our students learn during the year? Let's make sure that they don't regress in those skills. And then the second part of that is just readiness for the year ahead. So, um, they'll use some of that time to preview the material that they'll be working on, um, in the upcoming year, um, so that that's, those students will be, um, well-positioned to be successful. So those are kind of the twin ideas of the ESY program, which is, um, preventing regression and promoting readiness. So, um, eh, for the ESY program, uh, we have, uh, we have classrooms for each grade level, and, um, in those classrooms, the focus is on review, reviewing and previewing ELA and math skills. Um, and all of the students who are participating in the rooms have individualized, um, goals. So, um, so this, uh, teachers are tasked with integrating work on their goals within the ELA and math activities that occur in the classroom. In addition to those grade-level classrooms that emphasize ES, um, that emphasize ELA and math skills, we also have, um, TLC classrooms. Um, and the idea of these classrooms is they, um, they provide instruction on more, on more basic academic skills as well as basic participation skills. These are, these are for, uh, children with a, a significant level of need who often need instruction on, you know, how to be, how to participate in a group, how to manage your emotions, how to manage your behavior, how to interact with others. Um, and also there are related therapies, which might include fine motor therapies or speech-language therapies are also integrated in those rooms. So, so in addition to grade-level classrooms that offer ELA and math instruction, we have TLC classrooms as well. For some of our, our students who participate in grade-level classrooms, um, that emphasize ELA and math, they may be eligible for related service therapies. Um, so these may include speech-language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy. Um, so we have all of those specialists work over their summer as well. Also something that, you know, just, uh, within the department that we enjoy about the summer is it gives us a little bit of time to, um, to experiment with groupings, um, to get ready for the year ahead. So the, uh, the big idea when it comes to special education is putting students in less restrictive settings or in, in, um, ha, asking students to participate with fewer and fewer supports, because the idea is that promotes their independence and promotes their readiness. So there are some times where over the summer months, we may trial putting a student in, in, in a situation with less support to see if they're likely to be successful in the year ahead. Also, um, we might explore different, like, uh, uh, classmate groupings as well to make sure that we found the right cohorts, um, to get ready for the school year ahead as well. So some just arrangements related to the, uh, the program. As Chris mentioned, um, the, the dates and times are really meant to sync up with the, um, with the Green Wave Academy as well, which is just that we run our program from July eighth to August second. So it's, uh, July eighth is a Monday, um, and we run it Monday through Thursday for four weeks, starting July eighth. Uh, the time for children is, uh, they start at eight-thirty, and they are dismissed at 12:15. So that means three hours and forty-five minutes per day, four days a week, for a total of four weeks. The grade levels that our ESY program serves are, um, pre-K through E. There are still some children within Abington, uh, grades nine to twelve, who participate in extended school year programs. Um, but they're, um, but we tend to co, uh, contract with collaboratives to provide those services, um, just because there are some, um, some programs that have been running for, for years that are, they're just fine-tuned, and we think that's probably the best option for our students who have those needs. The content that's addressed are, are based on, um, the IEP and the IEP goals and objectives that our, our kids have. And like I said, um, also ELA and math skills are really emphasized in each classroom. Um, transportation for, uh, children is IEP-dependent, and one thing that's just really important for me to emphasize is that one of the biggest, um, um, tasks that we take in getting ready for the summer is, is deciding how we should group our students. So to be able, um, because having the right groups of students makes for a successful summer. And to be able to make those decisions depends on knowing who's actually going to, to show up in the summer. Um, I would, I would say about one out of every si, six students who are eligible for the program, um, uh, won't attend because their family has summer plans. Um, so what that means is at the end of April, all students who are eligible are going to receive an email to ask if they plan to attend this summer. It's just to make sure that we know that that child is coming, and we can make effective decisions about, about grouping, and decide how many staff members we need. Uh, we'll make, if we haven't received a response from a family, we will make multiple efforts to ask them if, if they do plan to attend. And with that said, if a family does show up on day one and they haven't registered, we'll still make sure that their child will come. But, uh, a big thing that helps our planning is just to, um, respond to our survey to indicate that they will be coming. Those are the highlights of the ESY program, um, are there any questions I can answer?
Um, it's just a general comment that just popped in my head, and obviously nothing to incorporate for this year, but, um, this morning was the crazy camp registration for Abington camps, which fell out in like 1.4 seconds. And a lot of the camps are like a nine-to-twelve timeline, and I wonder if students, I wonder if there's a benefit to students going to some of those camps, like an art camp or a basketball camp, nine-to-twelve, and then going to ESY after, knowing that, you know, they've gotten some energy out now, they're ready to learn. I know that that probably isn't the best time to educate students, so maybe it's not worth it, but just something I thought about and maybe worth thinking about if it's at all possible in the future.
Oh, well, thanks for the thought, and that, um, um, that brings two other thoughts to mind. One of which is that we do have a number of students who will participate in, uh, not all four weeks of the program, so that they can participate in a number of the other programs that, that go on in Abington, such as our basketball camp, and so on. So we, we do work with families who do have other goals for their children over the summer. So, um, so, yeah, there are a number of students who won't participate in the, in the full four weeks, so they can do, just as you said, participate in art camps and, and other camps that are available. One other thing we do is that, uh, for select students, we'll, um, we'll actually partner with, um, with some camps in town, well, primarily the Eager Beaver Camp, so that for students who have like, um, social pragmatic goals or, or social interaction goals, um, we'll actually register for them for the camp and provide staffing at the camp so that they can, um, get experience generalizing some of those skills. Um, so it's, it's something that, um, that we've used, um, that we don't have a abundant, an abundance of experience doing, but it is something that we've kind of explored and will continue to explore. And your suggestion's a good one, like, you know, um, perhaps we're precluding some children from participating in some of these recreational camps by our hours, so we can continue to reflect on that and see if there are ways we might be able to, um, create a more flexible schedule. So I appreciate the input.
Or even on the reverse side, like, maybe the rec department can talk, and maybe they can flip, you know, an art camp to at 12:30 to three or something like that, so, just something maybe it's worth exploring.
I just wanna, Dr. Robbins, just like, this program, the program has worked wonders and it's, it's improved, um, greatly since it, since I started seven years ago, so thank you for that, I know a lot of it's your hard work. I have one quick question, um, under the grade levels served, is that their current school year, or is that what they're going into?
Um, that is their current school year.
Okay.
Yep, so, um, ru, uh, so the la, so students who are rising to grades, uh, who have just completed grade eight will be the last students who participate in ours.
Okay.
And then a, after that, we, um, tend to contract with other.
Now that makes sense. Thank you. Um, thank, there's no motions for us, Dr. Robbins, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I can, for you, while I.
Yeah.
Put up this other slideshow, one quick reminder for everyone, the Chet Mallett Award nomination forms and the Deirdre Volunteer Service Award form is due for nominations by August, April second, um, and it's available on our website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so up next, first, really quick, uh, Mr. Born is not here, so Mr. Schaefer's gonna take his statement on the student travel and education.
So, um, this is just a, um, we could bring this back next month if people wish, but I think it's fairly self-explanatory. The high school feels as though there's an interest with the underclass people, the freshman and sophomore classes have an interest in going on a trip. So they thought they would offer this, but they don't want to offer things to students until the committee has, either approved them or not, because if we get ahead of, you know, what you might not approve, that's, that's a bad way to work out business. So you have the information here, be a trip to Puerto Rico for freshman and sophomore students who want to go, um, during the April break, uh, next year. And you can see the itinerary, um, the cost. And if we don't have the students to run it, they wouldn't go.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question, but it's probably more for Peter Serino. Um, for any athletes who miss, what are the school and MIA rules for missing practices or games when they get back?
Channeling my Peter Serino, and I know he's answered this question before.
I do too. I know he's answered it before too, yeah.
I just didn't know.
So I think, I believe from what I've, this is more from what I've heard secondhand, though, is that he lets them all know that you won't be penalized by the coaches or anything like that for, for missing the time. That said, no playing time is ever guaranteed, and if somebody can come, takes over your position while you're gone for ten days. position while you're gone for ten days, then that can happen. I believe that's kind of the same answer, but.
That is exactly what the answer.
Okay.
I just sat through that meeting.
Okay.
For the upper class and that's, yeah, you cannot be, it's a school sponsored trip. There will be no penalty.
There's no sanction, there's no penalty.
But if someone does a really great job in your absence, does not mean that you get your starting position back or what have you.
There are also sometimes they practice specific things before a specific game and you're not there for those things that may also be having any impact on your playing time.
I have two quick questions. Neither would stop me from voting on this tonight, so don't worry about that maybe if you don't know. Do you know when it plans to be opened up for students to express interest?
After the committee approves, they would start telling students about it having informational.
How does, does that get communicated down to Matt McCord in the eighth graders because you'll be freshmen next year?
Yes, they are planning on having that communication with eighth graders, so no one knows.
Okay, those are my two questions, so we're all set. Anybody else have anything?
No.
With, alright, so I'm looking for a motion to approve high school student travel to Puerto Rico during April vacation of next school year for the ninth and tenth grade.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Ms. Baresi for the Woodsdale School Improvement Plan?
Good evening. I'm excited to present Woodsdale School Improvement Plan to you and thank you for giving me an opportunity to share some highlights of our plan with you. I wanted to first thank my incredible school council members who have served two years with me. School Committee Chairperson Chris Foyle, our parent representatives Shawna Torpey and Vicki Graham, and our teacher representatives Megan Eddy and Andrea Doyen. They were and are instrumental with creating our school improvement plan and my teacher reps helped to live it each and every day. So I wouldn't have been able to do this work without them and I'm very grateful for all of their time, effort and support. I'm going to start out with some of our celebrations with the accomplishments that we've made this year with our three overarching goals. And with, under our first goal of teaching and learning with improving student performance and reading and mathematics through curriculum instruction and assessment, we've really moved literacy to the forefront of everything that we do at Woodsdale. We're working to transform reading instruction because as an elementary school teacher, reading is the heart of everything that we do. So this year we continued implementing year two of reading workshop with that goal of really developing a love of reading, teaching kids to be amazing thinkers, and talking about complex texts. So reading workshop is really a good vehicle for making meaning and our kids are doing extraordinary work during that part of our day and our teachers are working so hard to make this instruction come to life every day at Woodsdale. And another exciting accomplishment that we made this year is we pushed the science of reading into our literacy block. So our teachers were trained in grade three in foundations and in grade four with just words. That programming provides the foundational skills of reading and for those students who struggle with lifting the print on the page, those skills really help them to read the text and then be able to take that leap to go deeper with making meaning. And then we've used some data-driven decision-making to really inform our instruction. We've used benchmark data, students' performance data to create goals and provide really tailored intervention cycles based on student needs. And we progress monitored those performance results to keep our groupings fluid and just to really make sure that we're tailoring instruction to meet our students where they're at in both literacy and mathematics. Underneath goal number two, within that space of facilities, we've really collaborated regularly with members of the police and fire department to make sure Woodsdale is as safe as it can be as that is our number one priority each and every day. So by that, through that collaboration, we've participated and regularly practiced our fire and Alice drills. And then goal number three, which is really, I think, the heart of everything that we do is that community learning goal. We're trying to build a positive culture and climate within the Woodsdale community and at the same time extending our partnerships with the Abington community at large. This year we really zoomed in on our core values of respect, responsibility and resilience. And we meet monthly to discuss what those core values are, what they look like in action. And, you know, those, those Owl awards are just something else over at Woodsdale. The kids just love them. They love earning them and, you know, they're featured on the Facebook each week. And then I think something else that I'm really proud of is just our partnership with PTO to strengthen those connections between home, school and the Abington community. I think that Woodsdale is unique with our PTO because it's constantly evolving because we have that two-year cycle. So we have, you know, parents moving in and out of that space and we just have such a committed organization that just comes together and does, you know, what's best for kids and we have really such a good time. So I'm just very grateful to, to have the opportunities to work with such an amazing organization. Any questions on our celebrations from this year?
I have some, I'll just, I guess I'll, I'll mention right now, so the, is you just, because you just hit on it, so it's just fresh in my mind.
Yes.
So the PTO, you are exactly right, like, because I lived that way in years past and I do notice the, the outreach has definitely grown from where it was, let's say, eighth grade, let's say four years ago, three or four years ago. COVID was part of that, but even before that, it was, it was very difficult for that to evolve there because of the quick nature turnaround of it. At Beaverbrook, everybody's so excited because it's the first time. So it doesn't happen at Woodsdale as much, so I just want to commend everybody involved with that because I can see the outreach that's there and the things that they've worked to do and it's gotten much stronger in the past four years than it was in the years prior to, in my opinion, so.
I agree.
No problem.
Sorry, I know that you were saying Reader's Workshop, Science of Reading. I know that there had been a push particularly coming out of COVID. Teachers were seeing a lack of just basic phonics ability. Had we brought in a, I thought there was a program coming in, is that still being addressed, used?
Can you, can you clarify?
Phonics, is that through, is that?
Yes, Jen Baresi is the leader of that. So I, I've, I've trained the teachers in foundations along with Andrea Doyen.
Okay.
So we tag teamed and so I trained the teachers in foundations and then Andrea trained the, I trained the third grade teachers in foundations and then Andrea trained the fourth grade teachers in Just Words. And it's really been an ongoing collaboration all year and really reframing how we're looking at our meeting times, curriculum meetings, faculty meetings, common planning time meetings, peer observation cycles, anything that we can do to push that PD to the forefront of all the work that we do. So I think with being really clever with, with how we're looking at meeting structures has helped to create a space with some really powerful professional development that we were able to cure in-house.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, so moving forward to next year, I think that my three overarching goals are usually within the realm of keeping students happy, safe and learning. Those are always the three big buckets. So within the happiness bucket, I think culture and inclusion are at the heart of everything that we do every day. So some of the activities that we're proposing to accomplish next year, we're going to continue using our core values of responsibility, respect and resilience as those foundational underpinnings for fostering a positive culture and climate at Woodsdale School. And we're going to continue, you know, continue with the Owl awards, continue with that daily recognition by staff, by families. I think it's real important for children in third and fourth grade to be recognized and have that reinforcement externally first and then they begin to internalize it. I think that that's really critical for this age group. We're going to continue to prioritize communication with families because that, you know, serving families is everything that we do at Woodsdale. It's everything that we do as a school system. We're changing our school newsletters to weekly instead of bi-weekly, again, to just to keep that communication consistent. I think that's really important. And then in terms of our strong, amazing partnership with PTO, we're going to expand PTO into subcommittees so that we have, you know, of course we have that huge social piece because that's what PTO is right now is, you know, thinking about ways that we can bring kids and families together to socialize and have a good time like, you know, that sensational school dance that we just hosted in January. But we're thinking about rebranding PTO so that we have maybe a focus group who's really excited about continuing those social events and those enrichment activities that we host at Woodsdale. But maybe we can recreate another focus group so that we have monthly curriculum coffees and that focus group is really interested in teaching and learning. So we're looking to expand PTO so that we're teaching families, you know, what does a typical day in the life look like at, you know, Woodsdale? What does reading instruction look like in third and fourth grade? What does mathematics instruction look like in third and fourth grade? An opportunity to teach parents what learning looks like. And maybe we have another month where we break PTO up into a subcommittee that's focused on safety. And, you know, what kind of safety precautions do, do, are we using at Woodsdale? What does that look like? So that might be the focus of maybe another coffee for another month. But really broadening PTO so that, yes, we continue to have those social events to bring kids together, but that we're also looking to teach families about what learning looks like in the intermediate grades and how we keep kids and staff and families safe at, at Woodsdale. So any, any questions about goal number one? I'm wishing I had like a little goal noodle. So, goal number two is our teaching and learning goal. So because we really did a lot with data-driven decision-making this year, that falls under the multi-tiered systems of support as Dr. Basta had talked about in his previous presentation. We're going to continue to use that as a framework to positively impact the social, the social, emotional, behavioral and academic needs of all students. So a highlight of some activities that we're going to do to achieve this goal includes continuing to do our data-informed meetings to make sure that we're meeting kids where they're at and we're giving them what they need during small group instruction in particular. As Dr. Basta indicated, we're going to dive into a new assessment system for literacy and mathematics, I Ready. And I think next year will be a good opportunity to learn, for our teachers to learn how to use that assessment system. And I think that's going to make a really big difference with having some consistency with literacy and mathematics, you know, that K to six piece studying that at Beaverbrook, I think will really help. And then we're going to continue with this work, not only within academics, but also with the data that we're getting to inform how we support students with social, emotional and behavioral needs. We're going to continue to use responsive classrooms, morning, morning meetings as a tier-one social, emotional support so that that's a space where we're modeling, you know, those big skills that we want students to use each day in their relationships with their peers at Woodsdale. And then we're, we're, we've been prac, we've been experimenting with this this year and it's been a huge success, so we want to continue with the support. Next year, we have some amazing psych interns. They just would knock your socks off. They knock mine off every day. And so they have created these psychoeducational interventions. So they have these month-long themes about, you know, how to cope with big emotions, you know, how to be a good friend. And they meet with these small groups of students from more intensive supports to talk about these skills and strengthen them. So they meet twice a week and it's, it's been really, really positive. So we want to continue with that work and go a little deeper with it next year. We're going to continue with reading workshop and we're going to continue with foundations and Just Words because we want to make sure that we have a comprehensive literacy block that's meeting the needs of all of our students. And then we're going to continue to have those fluid and flexible groupings to make sure that we're providing tailored interventions. And then something that we're, we're talking about that we'd like to try next year is we're really very focused on making sure that kids have what they need, but we have a real strong focus on our media students and our at-risk students. So we really want to explore tapping into how we're supporting our advanced students. So we're going to experiment with grouping kids and moving and like really pushing that group to make sure that they're getting what they need in reading and mathematics. So I'm really excited about, about that. Any questions on goal two?
I mean, I have something I'm gonna, I'll hit on at the end. It relates to the first one, so you can just finish, you can go through them all. Yeah, if anybody has anything.
Alright, and then our, and then our last goal is about Woodsdale being a safe space and place to learn in order for kids to become good citizens. And so here, I think one, one big highlight is, right now, I know Dr. Robbins has done so much work in getting our second step curriculum up and running at the elementary level and that's such an amazing social, emotional curriculum. And so what we want to do is we want to continue complementing all of that work, but we're noticing trends within certain, certain skill sets like kids being, you know, like aware of themselves, making good choices, really managing their emotions, being aware of, you know, others' emotions, their, you know, their, their relationships with others. And within those buckets, what we want to do is create some lessons, some social, emotional lessons in that space so that during morning meeting, we're seeing more of some trends with strengthening those particular skills across grades three and four. Because I think, you know, developmentally, they're such an impressed, third and fourth graders are at such an impressionable age and they're older, of course, than they're, they were at Beaverbrook in their primary years and they're not quite, you know, ready for middle school, but there, there's just so much to unpack with social, emotional learning. So we are going to create some lessons that will rotate between grades three and four so that everybody's exiting with the same content and we're hoping to just strengthen some of those skills for our students so that they'll be, they'll be happier and more regulated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have, does anybody have any questions they want to ask?
There's one.
Go ahead.
But I just, what's more comment? I love that we support all students and that we constantly seek to help, especially those who are struggling a little bit with the curriculum. But I like the focus on the advanced students too because I hear from a lot of parents that they feel like the advanced kids have gotten lost in the shuffle and that there isn't enough rigor for them and that we differentiate for, we technically differentiate for all levels, but not really enough for them. So it's, it's nice that they aren't getting lost in the shuffle. I like that. That we still support all levels.
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
I got one thing too at the end, so go ahead.
Go ahead, I have more than one.
Alright. I'm gonna go at the end. I'm gonna go at the end.
So I agree with Danielle. I like they focus on enhancing enrichment for some of the students who might feel bored. I think that the. Um, I think that the, your age group is a pivotal, pivotal age group for students to get bored in school and then act out. Um, and having student in your, um, building right now, I know there's behavioral issues, which I think there is across the district, but, um, you know, I think harnessing, um, the psych interns was an awesome idea. Uh, on our wellness committee, we heard about some of the success stories there. Um, you know, utilizing, um, recess times and lunch times and other periods where there's less structure to have groups of kids interacting with one another, I think is great. Um, and this last point here, this goal three, it gets me thinking about the vision of the graduate, which is primarily at high school level and makes me think about the transition from fourth to fifth, which I hear, I didn't experience this personally, but I've heard from a lot of people recently that that's a very difficult transition for students, both in terms of even just switching classrooms to having homework and responsibilities and deadlines and tests. And, um, I know hearing feedback from my daughter's fourth grade teacher a few years ago, she's like, "I can't even get kids from the desk to the rug." And that's a fourth grade classroom, they should be able to move to the rug and move back efficiently. So, um, I'm happy to hear that, um, that's something that the school is going to focus on because I think the students coming in from Beaverbrook over the next couple of years, you know, you're still gonna have students that are learning proper behavior, um, and interaction with one another. So I'm happy about that. Um, and I love the, um, expanded PTO to get some more feedback and interaction with the families. I think that is, will pay dividends for all of the future schools as well, so thanks for concentrating on that. So no questions, just a lot of comment.
Thank you.
Um, mine is kind, mine, mine is kind of along the same, so I mean, so thank you. So to staff, the parents, Shawna's here, so thank you Shawna. Um, I haven't been able to participate as much as I would have liked to, um, with my job and the change of returning to the office much more than we had in years past, so thank you. I want to hit back on the very, the first goal for this, so it has to deal with the, with inclusion. And it's more just a statement Jen, as, as opposed to a, um, a question on it, but this isn't a, I must say it's an opinion, it's an informed opinion, but it's an opinion. Um, that include, the inclusion, it can wane as the students get older, right? They're not, they're not, they're, in, from what I've seen, the togetherness that happens at Woodsdale doesn't always travel as the students get older, as they become more, whatever. So I just want to, I think it's important that you, that it's instilled in your building and that it's continuously brought up and exercised. And hopefully it can maybe stick with some of those kids and it does continue to grow as they get older and then gradually it continues to go. Um, the other, only other thing, I guess it's partly inclusion, is encourage, just encourage your staff to find a way to recognize, um, all the students as the opportunity presents itself. I see this, I still have the Woodsdale Facebook page, I still see them. So everybody sees them, I think everybody likes to be able to see what their child is doing. I know not everybody, it's not everybody gets a trophy kind of thing, but it's, when there's the op, everybody can be recognized for different things and different ways that they've contributed. And I think it's important that that's recognized in Woodsdale, in Abington Middle School, in Beaverbrook and in Abington High School. So with you being here and you being the first one to go, I just wanted to bring that up. Um, so thank you for what you're doing and just hope to continue and expand as much as you can. Yep, thank you. I know it's a late night Jen, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Um, next up, report of the Assistant Superintendent, everybody's non-favorite subject coming up. Dr. Michelle.
Thank you. I left for you, uh, in your, on top of your packet or under your packet, the latest and greatest, um, increase by major category for the school department budget. As you, uh, know, we have town meeting on Monday night, April first, at seven o'clock in the middle high school auditorium. Um, I'd just like to take a second to thank Heidi and Melanie for their, um, involvement and assistance as the Budget and Finance Subcommittee as we've walked through this budget season. I'd also like, uh, to take an opportunity to thank, um, Scott Lambisi, the town manager, uh, for working so closely with us through this process that hasn't been an easy one. Um, it, uh, it has had its bumps, uh, but I will say as of, um, last week, um, it's, we have a, um, balanced budget to go into town meeting with. Um, that didn't come without a little bit of pain from the school department as well as all the other departments in town. So you have in front of you, um, the, uh, increase by major category in the school department budget that is in the town meeting, um, packet and this is part of the town meeting budget. Uh, the last time we met, um, we had a budget that included, uh, two new positions, a first grade teacher and a sixth grade teacher. And in order to balance the budget, um, in the town with, uh, with the school department and all the other, um, budget factors, we had to remove those two positions from our budget. So we now have a 3.6% increase in the school department budget or a $30,793,642 school department budget. That being said, um, so just as a reminder, some items were removed from the school department budget such as, um, the laptops, one-to-one laptops and, um, instructional, a portion of our instructional materials. And those have been moved to, uh, the capital plan and they continue to reside, uh, in the capital plan to be funded, um, at town meeting. So we had to reduce, uh, the two, um, positions, the first and sixth grade teacher. So working with our administrative team, which, um, I'd like to also thank, um, we believe that we will be able to, um, still fund those two positions, um, for next year. And that's through a combination of other positions being cut and some other reductions that we believe that we can take to get to, um, our budget numbers. So, for example, um, the middle school believes that they can reduce by a paraprofessional. And the high school believes that they can also reduce by a tutor. The tutor position at Abington High School is currently unfilled. So, um, s, uh, because of some movements, um, in long-term subbing positions, um, that position is currently unfilled. And the middle school paraprofessional position, um, we believe that we'll be able to reduce that position through attrition, so no one who's currently employed would lose their job. But as someone leaves, we wouldn't fill their position and then someone from the middle school would move into that position. Um, we also received another retirement, um, today, uh, yesterday and we anticipate, um, hi, some hiring savings on people that, um, have indicated they're not coming back next year and we believe we can bring in, um, new hires at a lower salary. And then I've also talked about, um, the April first, there's an April first special education deadline. There's also, um, a, a deadline, application deadline for Norfolk Agricultural School. So I had, we had, had, it had been indicated to us that four students were applying to Norfolk Agricultural School, we believe that number to be one, uh, three, so I can reduce that part of programs with all the districts by, by one student. So through those four items, we believe that we can fund the first and sixth grade teacher. Um, I, I do have to say that the reduction of the paraprofessional and the tutor will impact students. That, that, those are positions that we have needed, but we need less than 29 students in first and, um, in sixth grade. So through scheduling, um, through some, through some scheduling and some different use of staff, we can provide the services that would have been provided by the paraprofessional and the tutor, um, but it does impact students. So, um, so that's where we are as of tonight. We, like I said, as of Friday, uh, Thursday, there was a balanced budget in the town. Um, and this is, um, like I said, I believe that this is what we're going to town, this will be the number presented at town meeting. What I would ask, um, from the committee is that, um, ask any questions? And then this number, our budget number, actually be voted right before town meeting at our school committee meeting prior to town meeting. Um, I don't anticipate anything changing between now and then, but should it change, um, we would have that information prior to that 6:30 meeting.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that it's an absolute shame that schools aren't properly funded. Um, that being said, I appreciate the foresight, planning and competence of Peter, Felicia, school committee members who are on, who are on that committee, anybody else involved in the budget process because it's allowed us to have minimal impact while other towns are in crisis. And I hope that that's not headed our way, but I don't know if everyone knows what a good place we are in compared to others and much appreciated. And again, I hope at some point, sometime in my lifetime, that we properly fund our schools.
Heidi, Melanie, thank you. Felicia, I just have a couple of questions, it's based off more what you said.
Sure.
So you mentioned additional retirement and spec, and not going to Norfolk Ag. Is that in here?
That, that's how we're going to fund that first and first.
So that retirement offset I see right here is not reference to the retirement.
That's prior to today, or prior to this latest reduction.
So the idea is to still get those teachers, it's just not through an increase in anything?
That's exactly right, thank you.
Okay, alright, that helps answer it, cleared it up for me, so. Um, does anyone else have any questions?
Just a clarification, sorry. Um, that we properly fund our schools with government money. I know that Abington can't, can't afford any other tax dollars. I'm not looking for it from the residents, so I just wanted to make sure, Abington, thank you.
My only, so you just gave this to us today. Is it online, the online agenda, probably not. Can we somehow get this into the online agenda so people can at least see the most recent one? Even though I know it can possibly change Monday?
Yep.
But just so they can see the most recent one because it's a big change from the last one they saw, that's all.
Yes, thank you.
Um, alright, so there's no motion on that, right, go ahead.
Can I just, I've even, um, a thank you to the finance committee, listening to the level of questions that they asked, their knowledge, um, in their understanding that this, this committee really does work hard. Felicia, all of you work really hard to be fiscally responsible, um, to be as conservative as possible without ever compromising the quality of education for our students. Um, you know, what we are asking our teachers to do. Um, and I could hear and I could feel in the room that the finance committee truly were going to work as hard as they could to, with what they had, understanding that what we had written on paper was truly what we felt was the best use of money for our students. So I just want to give a shout out to them because this is not an easy job at all.
Thank you. I agree, I appreciate the finance committee and their level of questions and thank you for, for being there.
I'll let you go to the next two if you really want to.
Alright, I don't know. Um, this is a little weird for me, um, but, uh, as you know, that North River Collaborative and Reed's Collaborative, um, have a board of directors and the board of directors are made up of the superintendents of schools of the send, of the, um, member districts. So, um, I have a request of two motions. One is to appoint me, um, as the representative for Abington for North River Collaborative Board of Directors. And in a second, um, motion, appoint, uh, me as the, um, Abington representative to Reed's Collaborative. Sorry, Peter, unless you would like to, next, next year, okay.
Any questions other than it was, it was different seeing Felicia's name there for the first time? That's gonna feel normal after a year of the, every other year of repeating it?
That took me by, not by surprise, it, it was, it was different.
Anyone have any questions on it?
Nope.
Were you voting on them separately?
Separately, yeah. So I'll be looking for a motion to appoint Dr. Felicia Michelle to serve as the Abington Public Schools Representative on the Board of Directors of North River Collaborative for the 24-25 school year.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, same way, a motion to appoint Dr. Felicia Michelle to serve as the Abington Public Schools Representative on the Board of Directors of Reed's Collaborative for the 24-25 school year.
Make a motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No problem. All these extra things always look good on people who busy with us.
Okay.
Moving on to our next school committee meeting. Um, so as was, as was just mentioned, so we will be meeting Monday night, um, in the glass, classroom back here at 6:30 PM prior to town meeting to discuss and vote, go into town meeting with what our budget will be. Um, we will not be returning after town meeting to the glass classroom, so we'll be adjourning from there. And then our next regular monthly meeting will be April 23rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM here. Give me one second. Just some other dates that weren't mentioned. Um, town meeting will take place at 7:00 PM on Monday in the auditorium. As Dr. Basta mentioned earlier, the deadline for online nomination submissions for the Chet Mallett educator and su, support staff, I'm sorry, Chet Mallett Outstanding Educator and Support Staff in the Digi Volunteer Service Awards is Tuesday, April 2nd. Monday, April 15th is Patriots Day, all school offices and buildings will be closed in that week. That day is the beginning of spring vacation week for the students. So if there's nothing else, I can't, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much and have a good night.